Thursday, March 13th, 2014, meeting of the school committee. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. This time, I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. We have much to discuss today, including many of our students are here. With the mayor's permission, we'd like to move the students up to the top of the agenda so they can get home, to bed at a reasonable hour. First, we'd ask Heather Langlois to come up. Heather's been leading many of our arts efforts here in the district.
Here.
And, yes, please.
Okay.
And can talk to you about some of the recent awards that our students won in the Boston Globe Arts Competition, as well as, I think, we're gonna have a chance to show you a brief video about that.
The Boston Globe Scholastic Show is an annual competition featuring writing and visual art awards. And this year, we submitted artwork, visual artwork, from the Partham Middle School and the PFA High School. And we had 11 winners from the high school and five winners from the Partham Middle School. And a couple of the winners at the PFA are gold key winners and they will be featured in Boston at the show. The Silver and Honorable Mention Awards just have recognition. And we have a video.
The Boston Globe Scholastic Art Show is an annual competition for all the students in Massachusetts to compete against each other in the fields of drawing, painting, sculpture, any kind of medium.
I'm Brittany and I'm a junior and I'm in PFA. I made a piece called "When I Grow Up", and it's basically a young girl smoking a cigarette. And the entire, like, concept of it is, why is it okay when you're past 18? Because you have to start at some point.
Kyla Wells.
Hajar Abadi.
Erica Torres.
Christian Lawrence.
James Fulgenya.
I did a portrait of myself where I come from, which is Morocco.
I'm painting.
I'm John Travels and I teach photography at Lawrence High School.
I'm Erin Foster and I'm an arts instructor in Performing and Fine Arts High School.
Well, we ask students to submit their best work, work that is thought-provoking.
Juniors or seniors submitting something like an extensive portfolio. And then, other times, students will come to us as a freshman and ask if they can take part. And this year, we had a freshman do very well.
My name is Xavier Santiago and I go to Lawrence High School and I'm in PFA. I made a piece called "Afterthoughts". Like, a combination, just like, of things that I like, but then again, things that other people would like.
Xavier Santiago actually submitted a graphic design piece. And he was our first ninth grader in the 15 years that we've been submitting. But actually, we received recognition, we received third place.
My name's Perla Janau. I go to Lawrence High School.
My name's Chantel Caminero and I go to PFA as well.
My name's Carmen Dara and I go to PFA as well.
I submitted a portfolio on toys. It was just a series of colored pencil drawings on different toys.
I submitted a photo of a building from Edinburgh, Scotland, that was inspired by a trip I went this summer.
I submitted digital art. It's a pop art self-portrait and a photo I took in Scotland.
Some of the Partham students are being displayed in Barry Feingold, Senator Barry Feingold's office at the State House right now.
I got these incredible paintings from the school and I was so excited. And they are now decorating my whole office. So I couldn't be more excited how I now have a vibrant, colorful office. And I thank all the students here for gracing us with their wonderful work.
What do you like about art?
I guess portraying messages, like, out, like, social causes, because you can do so much with it. You can, like, you can get messages across with it.
Everything about art is that, I don't know, you can do anything with it. Like, you just put things in your own style.
I just really like painting. I like missing colors and putting it on the canvas.
I like photography, because depending on what you photograph, you can convey a different message. And if you edit it differently, like, the colors change as well. So a dark photo could mean something different than a light photo. So I like the editing aspect of it.
I have fun photographing objects.
And what's your favorite color?
Blue.
Black.
Yellow.
And I'm green.
Blue.
Purple.
Green.
Pink. Definitely blue.
Black.
So with the school committee's approval, I'd ask the students from the Partham that are here, James Fulgencio, Christian Lawrence, and Hajar Abadi, to come up and take a photo with the school committee up front.
Did we go over there?
Where do you want to sit?
I think you guys, the school committee can come up front here and they can stand right in front of you. Sorry, I forget, we have so many new members. You got the lights? We squeeze everybody in. That's my line, Mr. Mayor. I love it. Get close, like, pretend you like each other. Okay, all set? Couple of pictures and one more time. You broke the camera. Oh, there it is. So I do one more just for the, for the fun of it. Oh, wait, fixing your hair, I see. All set? You look beautiful. There you go. Great, thank you. We'd also like to take this moment to recognize Jonathan Guzman. On Monday during the MST lunch, Jonathan Guzman, a senior from MST, is going to be receiving accolades from Channel 7 News as part of their segment called Class Act. Jonathan was nominated by the Salem State Upward Bound Program for his community service and leadership on campus in the community. The plan is to have Jonathan the upper calf, where the crew is going to interview him and get some footage of him on campus. We should be very proud of Jonathan and his efforts. We have a certificate here for him. Oh, hello. How are you? Congratulations. Oh, sorry. We're gonna show the video, I guess. And then, we're gonna have you guys take a photo of him.
We are here for our Class Act segment. I'm Krista Del Campbell. I'm outside Kana Whitworth. And what we do is every week, we highlight an outstanding student across the Commonwealth. And today, it brings us to Lawrence High School.
Yeah, and we're so happy to introduce everybody to Jonathan Guzman. He's the perfect example of what a class act is in our minds. Someone that does a lot for their school and for their community. And I think one of my favorite things about you is that you get all of your friends involved, too.
Yeah. So basically, I love, the thing is, why I do this is just because I wanna get them all involved. As, I love getting involved. And my mission is basically to get every peer that I know involved with the community and know where it's going around and the surroundings of them.
And so many people here at the high school know you, from what we have heard. And what's really interesting is that you've set up this organization so that people can really, you know, volunteer for something that really resonates with them. There's some different options, right?
Yeah, and basically, it's why is, we have so many clubs here. And my, well, the humanitarian club is our school choir club. And we get all the students from the six academies that we have. They don't, they don't know each other. And this gets them together, increases their literature skills, social skills. And it helps them, meet new people, get out there, help out, know what it does for you and what you can accomplish with this also. It helps you a lot.
Yeah, and this is a very big high school. And so, sometimes, it's a little bit hard to stand out in a high school of this size. But you're clearly doing that. And we're so proud to meet you, a perfect example of what we're looking for when we look for a class act at Channel 7.
It's something we look forward to doing every week. We come into high schools, we present, you know, the certificate and some t-shirts and hats.
It's amazing.
And hopefully, you know, you'll get to see the story as well on 7 News. We're gonna be doing that in a couple of Fridays. So congratulations again.
That's great. Thank you.
And it's so nice to meet you. What a pleasure.
Awesome. We can work together. Yay! I'm really excited.
Ladies and gentlemen, Jonathan Guzman. We're gonna ask you to come up again and take a photo with the mayor and the school committee, please. Set one more time. Great, thank you. As many of you know, Matt Evangelista and his troupe at the Performing and Fine Arts High School recently put on a production of "In the Heights". I had an opportunity to go last weekend and I can tell you, it was astounding. I was incredibly impressed. So impressed that I demanded Matt bring his folks today and give you a short vignette, if you will, of some of the work that they did. Matt, would you like to come up and kind of introduce the folks?
So what you're gonna see is we spliced together a whole bunch of little parts of different musical numbers from the shows, you kind of get a taste of the show. So this was our annual musical. We do one every year. And the show we picked this year was "In the Heights", which looks at living in Washington Heights as a Hispanic-American today. Great show, really related to them. And without further ado, we'll, we'll jump right in.
Jump right in. We have Audrey Fernandez, Ashley Enriquez, Jesse Furman, Ricky Rios, Steph Cart, Chris Vega, and Sofia Cardenas. And did I miss anybody? I think I feel like I missed somebody. If we got, if we missed you, we will get you, I promise.
Yeah, I'm a streetlight choking on the heat. The world spins around while I'm frozen to my seat. The people that I know, I'll keep on rolling down the street. But every day is different, so I'm switching up the beat. 'Cause my parents came with nothing. They got a little more, I'm sure, a part. But yo, at least we got the store. It's all about the legacy. They left with me. It's destiny. And one day, I'll be on a beach with Sunny riding checks. In the heights, I hang my flag upon display. We get to work every day, we got a lot of power. It reminds me that I came from miles away. We are, we are not stopping. Until the day we go from poverty to stardust. In the heights, I've got today. Today's all we got, so we cannot stop. This is our block. In the heights, I hang my flag upon display. I came from miles away. My family came from miles away. Every day. Every day. And tonight is so far away. But ask for my god, I mean, but if you gotta, just keep watching. In the heights, late nights, you taste beans and rice. The syrupy shaped ice. I ain't gonna say it twice. Turn off the stage lights. We're taking the flight to the days and the life of what it's like. In Washington Heights. It's hotter than the islands are today. And Mr. Softy Truck had broken down. And he comes off his customers my way. I go to, I run this town. Piragua, piragua. One twenty-five, piragua, piragua. Piragua. Two twenty-five, piragua. Black eyes, high cost of price. Lot of little lies, lot of little lies. Black clouds are nice, black clouds are nice. A little light, keep screaming, "Bye!" Piragua! Gotta go, I wanna show you all I know. The sun is setting and the light is getting long. Going to castle, lot of it. Maybe, maybe not, but wait and take a shot. When the day is hot, I gotta prefer shady spot. A little ways away, the daughter cool enough down. Walking back to town. Now back in high school, when it darkened, junior scout, I bet it's dark. And the snobby would bring his radio. I saw a walk home from senior studies. I see you wrapping with your buddy. The volume's high. I walked on by. You walked on by. Nobody's singing, singing. 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 Nobody's singing. When you're home, the summer nights are cooler. When you're home. It's on you, I fear me. It's the neighborhood just sharing when you're alone. Don't say that. What's wrong? Don't say that. When I was younger, I'd imagine what would happen if my parents had stayed in Puerto Rico. Would I be if I had never seen Manhattan? If I lived in Puerto Rico with my people? My people! Feel like all my life, I've tried to find the answer. Working harder, learning Spanish, learning all I can. I thought I might find the answer at Stanford. I stare out at the sea, thinking, where am I supposed to be? So please, don't say you're proud of me when I've lost my way. Then can I say? I couldn't get my mind off you all day. Now listen to me, that may be how you perceive it. But Nina, please believe that when you find your way again, you're gonna change the world and then we're all gonna brag and say we knew. Oh, well, eh, yeah, eh, eh. This was your home. Home. Welcome home. When you're here with. Welcome home. I used to think that you lived at the top of the world. Welcome home. I'm home. Finally, I'm home. Yeah, I'm a streetlight chilling in the heat. I illuminate the stories of people in the street. Some have happy endings, some are bittersweet. But I know them all and that's what makes my life complete. And if not me, who keeps our legacies? Who's gonna keep the coffee, she wish cigarettes and peas? Abuela, rest in peace, you live in my memories, but Sunny's gotta eat. This corner is my destiny. Brings out the best in me. You pass the test and you keep impressing me. Yes, indeed, you know I never leave. If you close your eyes, a hydrant is a beach. The siren is a breeze. A fire escapes a leaf on a fortress. Abuela, I'm sorry, but I ain't going back because I'm telling your story. And I can see a body smiling about my island. I've been on this whole time. I'm home. The hydrants are open. Cold breezes blow. It's a wonderful life that I've led. Hey, could you feel it? And I'm home. The hydrants are open. Cold breezes blow. Abuela, that in the stoop that you grew up. Long after your birds have all flown, and I'm home. Where the cops is not stopping, I drop this shit. People come, people go. Let me show you the people, what I know. There's no place like home. And let me step on rock and straight. I'm stepping to Vanessa. I'm getting a second date. I'm home. We're rich a hundred in the shade, but with patience and faith, you remain unafraid. I'm home. You hear that music in the air? Take the train to the top of the world. And I'm there. I'm home.
Get them up for a photo with the school committee.
Oh, yeah, she can.
I should let the mayor take the picture. Glide them up. He does everything.
You see them all the time. I don't need anyone to pick this up.
You didn't need anyone. So that's a tough act to follow, so I don't think we're gonna try. Moving on to the update, we are pleased to let folks know that over February vacation, we had over 2,000 students give up their vacations to come in to get extra help in our Acceleration Academies. These are small classes of about 10 students to every teacher. In this program, we recognize the best teachers in Lawrence. And really, some come from across the country as well. And they work with our kids in small groups for the week. And so, for kids to give up their vacation is a testament to their hard work and their industrierness and their motivation to get better. And last year, by way of comparison, we had about 900 kids who did it in February vacation. So to have over 2,000 is just quite an accomplishment. We're very thrilled. The program will continue over April vacation, where there's more of a mathematics focus. And we're looking forward to seeing a great turnout there as well. With that said, we're gonna move on to the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I'm told that the chair has a special interest in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And we're gonna ask Kevin Clement if he's here to come up. Kevin has been helping us run point. Many of our schools have decided to jump in and be part of this parade, which I'm told is growing by the day. Kevin?
I'm used to following Chris Molino. What's with that? We, the participation in the parade extends to all corners of the city. The schools from the Frost to the Arlington, to the Partham, to the South Lawrence East. They're coming from all corners. We probably have 15 schools that will be represented at the parade. More than 650 students will march in different divisions. They come complete with chaperones. The district has provided busing for them, so they'll be bussed from their different locations and then back to the locations after the, after the parade. They're due to arrive behind the Oliver School, the former Oliver School, the Oliver Partnership School now. At 11:30, 11:45, they'll be placed into the divisions behind the North Common Education Center. We have made arrangements to keep that open on a limited basis for bathroom facilities for the kids while they're waiting. And after their drop, the buses will go right to the South Lawrence Common, where they'll park before the parade starts, so that they're there when the parade ends. And the kids will walk from the Reliefs Inn to the South Lawrence Common and they'll be bussed back to their, their schools. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I just wanted to say, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to know how many schools exactly we had participating?
If you give me a half a second, I will count them. Twelve. There were 12 schools. The high school has like three different, I only counted that as one, but they have like the band, ROTC, and the wrestling team. So that's either one or three, depending upon... I'm sorry?
And the dance troupe.
The dance troupe. There may also be some schools that are participating that chose not to use transportation, so they may walk to the starting point, the finish point as well.
So that's just with floats?
There are, from my understanding, there may, there may be between four and six floats from the school department, from the different schools. But since I do transportation, I don't have to worry about the floats.
Can you say more than 600 students will?
There'll be more than 600 students. Every, everyone from kindergarten students from the Rollins School to the high school. So it's a full gamut.
And I'd like to say, when we put this out to principals, we just asked for two or three volunteers, but we've been kind of blown away by the response. And there's some competition taking place as well. So it's been, it's been great to revive some of the old traditions. Yep. Any other questions? I just wanna say thank you, because I know that I probably learned how to step dance before I learned how to merengue when I was a kid. Because we were always, the schools were such a big part of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And when I was at the Lennar, we, we would definitely participate. So it is such a big deal that we get everybody involved in, in, in community celebrations. And we'll come back and talk to you about Hispanic Week Parade in a couple of months. But thank you so much for the staff that's doing it and all the kids preparing for it. We all appreciate it. No, we're very excited. And as you know, everyone's Irish on St. Patrick's Day. So that's, that's how the Irish do it. So thank you so much, Kevin. We appreciate it. In your packets that you were sent earlier in the week or last week, there was data that was requested on graduation rates, dropout rates, and suspension rates. Some of it looked like this. Essentially, what you're seeing is the graduation rate for the last two years has been going up. It's at the highest in the history of Lawrence. And the dropout rates are going down for the last two years, and they are the lowest in the history of Lawrence. With that said, we have a lot of work to do, but the numbers are encouraging. Suspensions, you can see some year-to-date comparisons from 13 to 14. District-wide, the suspension rate is down about 0.4%. With many schools going down, you will see a few blips going up. But I don't know if there's any question about any of that data. The total number, is that across the bottom system, PK through 12? Yes. Is that the number we? Yes. You're talking suspension data now, right? Yeah, suspension data, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. It was, so if you look to the right-hand side, it's out-of-school suspensions. Last year, at this time, was 4.4%. This year, it's 4%. In-school suspensions, last year was 3.9%. This year, it's 2.0%. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I, I just had a quick question. I mean, generally, these numbers are very good. Obviously, a few anomalies that stick out. But my only question is the PFA, not PFA, I apologize, BMF. I mean, it's the only one that consistently through the entire time has above 10% for suspension rates. Is, is it just a stricter policy there? Is it kids who act up more? Is there any explanation behind that one, or?
You know, I think we've seen BMF, at least when I initially arrived, as one of our more challenging schools. They did enter into Level 4 status, as you know, I think before my arrival. What you see before you is they've cut their suspension rate, however, almost in half, from 18.4% to 11.2. I think they've been really working on culture and climate there. But it's something that bears watching. These are, these are numbers that we look at frequently, not just now, but at the end of the year. And then, we look for multi-year data.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I would le, I'd like to just, you know, as we think about those numbers, that people are thinking about how would we drive them down? So if there's stuff that's going on in those buildings that they're already talking about, they have a little plan or something together with it? We'd love to see just that the principal in these schools are, hey, we know the number's up and we're doing these three things to try to deal with it. Love to see something that, in some, a memo format like that. Sure. Other questions on any of the data?
That, that's kind of along the lines of what I was gonna say, as far as the suspension rate and the dropout rate. Do we have prevention programs in place? I mean, I'm, I'm not aware, but if.
We've, we've made bringing back our students. We've, we've made bringing back our students a kind of major priority in keeping our kids from dropping out over the last few years. We have a scholar engagement, re-engagement manager, we brought in the Phoenix Alternative School. We've been actively looking at students who dropped out of school but may have been one or two classes away, and worked hard, you know, the folks on the ground did a great job working hard to get them back into summer programming, whatever, so they could actually graduate and walk across the stage. So we've really kind of had a relentless focus on data to try to make sure that we are capturing all the kids that have the chance to graduate to do that. We've been offering things like Graduation Academy in the evenings to help students who may have failed a class throughout their high school career to make that class up, and giving our students different pathways so that they can make up any credits that they've lost. What you'll see in Lawrence is we actually offer two graduations, one in June and then also one in August, for students who have to complete summer work, but we do that because we wanna make sure that our students have additional time, if necessary, to get across the stage.
When we, we had first started this program of getting kids back into schools that had missed, how, we had, we had gotten updates on numbers, if we could do that again, just
Sure.
how many kids have, that were short, just a couple of classes that have graduated since, and just the improvement that that's continued, 'cause I think that was, that's something that needs to be highlighted for, for the efforts that, that your administration has done.
Well, I think, you know, we have a lot of amazing teachers and we have the scholar re-engagement people in our parent welcome center, I mean, I think it's a real team effort on the ground for folks that are really trying to stay connected with our students, so we're happy to get that information to you.
Thank you.
On the, on the dropout rate, I understand that the Hispanic community, that the Hispanic community, they move out, out of the city frequently, like they move maybe to Mattoon to another district. Are we considering that data as well? I mean, are we, are we following up, like when the student move out of the city or out of the district? Are we having those students ask a dropout, or we just follow up to know that they didn't drop out, or they might?
This is a very smart question, I would say that it's incumbent on each school district to track students, so whether they move to a different district, if they move out of state, if they move out of country, unless we can actually prove that somehow and report it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it counts as a dropout against us. We've been incredibly vigilant in our efforts to try to track kids down and find out where they went, because sometimes we are being coded for dropouts for kids that actually may have been in a school that wasn't a public school. So they might have gone to a private school or what have you, and because we didn't know where they went, that was factored in against us. So it's taken a fair amount of effort and that work continues on a daily basis. We do have a transient community where we have students who come often and some students leave, so it's, it's an extra burden for the school district, but it's really imperative that we continue to track our kids so that we get a fair representation for our number.
Anything else?
Just real quick, I think the district has come a long way from when I graduated, where you would look around the room and you knew that half of the kids there weren't gonna be graduating with you. So I think it's, it's great what we're doing, and the question to you, Jeff, is what, if there's anything that us as school committee members can do, or even the community can do to sort of get involved and help, not just with the dropout rate, but you know, anything that deals with keeping the kids, keeping students to finish high school and enroll in college, I think we would love to know.
Yeah, I mean, I, Pavel, I think, you know, I've seen you do it when you go to Spark Academy and talk to the middle school kids, you know, like for, for them to see such a successful kid who looks like them, who came up in the same neighborhood, like that's hugely impactful for students to have those role models. I think together, we can do a lot more to kind of fix this problem. We've gotta work on our outreach, and that means getting the word out to parents and community members. A lot of times, kids may not know how close or far away they are, and if we're able to kind of get out in the community and say, this is an important deal, whether it's through advertisement, word of mouth, you folks as school committee members have a, you know, kind of a bully pulpit to get out there, Twitter or whatever you kids use, to kind of get the word out that we are looking to recapture our kids and get them back in school, and there are these new pathways to get them across that stage, is just incredibly helpful.
One question. I know, I know we very much concentrate on the high school experience and getting our kids through their four years or however long it takes. Is there, is there any essentially follow-up on what happens to these kids afterwards in the sense of where they've gone, what they've achieved, other than through like the Alumni Association or anything like that?
I think our tracking right now is pretty weak, and I think it's an area that we're gonna need to improve on in a great way. As we move to, it's very important for me to try to reach out to see, and this is one area, Mr. Pajano, where you in particular, given the Glibon group and everything that you have, could help us, to get students who went to Lawrence High School, graduated from college, and may be interested in returning and working in the school system, to get that word out, I think is really important for us. So we're interested in, in kind of local talent, we've got a tremendous amount of talent, and I don't think we have a good mechanism right now to track our kids when they go to a two- or four-year college and to say, hey, you know, there's opportunities to come back and work in Lawrence, because there are opportunities in the school system.
So are we doing anything to improve that, that system?
We're, so I'll give you one example, some of you know, when we first started, some of our Level Four schools went and did something called Match Tutors. Match Tutors is kind of an organization that came in and hired folks to tutor kids in small groups, and the numbers were pretty successful. We have decided, however, that it's fairly cost prohibitive, and that because we had kind of a grant money to use that program, we needed a more efficient and I think more homegrown method to get tutors out, and so we've asked, as Match begins to transition out, we've asked them to work with us to start identifying students who did graduate from college but were Lawrence High School kids, and to try to really focus on getting them to see, be some match tutors in that year after college.
Anything else?
I guess the last thing I'll say is, just having heard the superintendent on, on the radio, talking about some of that low-hanging fruit, people that were really close to graduation, that we were just, just needed some convincing, and I think that is, you know, strategically smart, but I think incredibly emotionally supportive to these kids that were so close. So I think it's, it's funny, 'cause you move the needle so much, 'cause there's so many kids that are so close, and it makes it look like there's such, it makes such a big dent, but I think the big dent that actually happens is in these kids' lives that they, somebody actually cared enough to call them up or go out and get them, and say, hey, look, look how far the line is, so I just wanted to congratulate you on that piece, 'cause it, it's, it's a double hit, you get the number to move and you also make a huge impact in these kids who are right on the edge of, of hopelessness.
Well, I'm proud of the work that was done, I think Shalimar did a lot of the work in the first year, and then Ladami took over for her when Shalimar came to assist me, about knocking on doors, going to meet with families. I will say, however, it's unfortunate that this was not done before, and that we were missing some kids that were just so close, and that's, we're glad to be up and running, and, you know, listen, this is a, a school system that doesn't have a tremendous amount of money, and we get that, but to, to be able to get students into the pipeline, we know what the, what the numbers are for life outcomes for kids that graduate high school versus those that don't.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm told we're moving on to a discussion on subcommittees. Mr. Chair, I'll give you the floor, since this was brought by either yourself or one of your members.
Mr. Blackford?
Yep. We, we used to, prior, prior to two thousand nine, I believe it was, that we used to have subcommittees here on Lawrence School Committee. I think it was budget and academics and things like that. I know there's a couple areas of focus that, that are truly important to some of us. Mr. Pajano, for example, has a lot of interest in SAT prep and things like that, and I think it would be really good for our efforts, is that we can kind of choose a couple areas of focus that we think that we can either assist the school system with, or that we feel that needs a little extra focus from us, or a combination of us in the, in the school district, and I think it, it needs to be a discussion that I think we could have.
I think, I, you know, as we try to figure out how to use people's energies in support of the, the receivership, that, you know, we could set up these support types of committees around budget and, and the like, I'm not even sure what all of the committees were before, some of them may be not necessary now, but I think that'd be helpful, especially to, again, focusing our energies as we try to support the receivership. Clearly before, it was in a, in a authoritative situation where the school committee was overseeing in, in those situations, it wouldn't be the case that way now, but I think it's helpful, so we can have some of these discussions in small group settings, and then how, how that energy can be channeled again in support of the, the receivership. But I, I don't know what the total number of the committees, I mean, I would be, I, I would have to go look at it.
I, I also think that, I mean, it, 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 it also should not just be about us, meaning, I think it needs to be getting parents involved, getting teachers involved, getting some of the administration involved, obviously, I mean, the more, more people sitting at the table in the meeting would, it would be more of a community meeting than a subcommittee meeting really than anything else, but it gives an outlet for people to discuss an issue that either the superintendent feels that we could take on for him, that just isn't getting a focus, again, that some, something that we can do to assist, because I feel that as a body that we have this podium that I think we can really use to benefit our students.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think, Jim, we, we had a good start with this last year when we started visiting the schools at night and meeting with parents, and I think that's something that I, I hope we continue in some format, and, and engaging the parents and seeing us out there. Is it, I think that would be a great, great way to start.
And, and that format is kind of a task force format, which is, is different, 'cause you, it's around one issue and you can bring people together in different buildings, and I, I think that, I think you guys toured with the turnaround plan, right? That's what you did? And then maybe they tour around with something that's different, like the AP sports or AP classes, and, but I think as a, a form of subcommittee as part of this group, I don't know if you want it, if that's the way you wanna go, that's different than subcommittees, 'cause I, the way I was thinking when you first started talking about it, you know, I'm always interested in the budget stuff and I would love to just, you know, be supportive in that, but, you know, I may be the only one up here who would wanna, you know, go through the numbers and stuff, but, but if it's about curriculum and how they're doing, 'cause they're doing amazing things, and, you know, we wanna maybe see what's inside, you know, the, the secret sauce to some extent, but that stuff, as a committee, we, we would structure, but if you're looking to do it the way that the turnaround plan was done, that's, I think that's outside, run by this or, or charged by this, but not as a format from the committee, but not, not to discourage it.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, that's the, I think that's the discussion I kind of wanted to have, because I think that the turnaround plan would kind of show, was, was actually really good, I mean, a task force and something like highlighting, something similar to that, AP classes for the high school, things like that, I think it would be a very beneficial. I agree, I think there should be subcommittees as well, but I think that, I think a task force type of, again, would be, I think, beneficial.
Yeah, and we could call it something else, I think maybe that language is a little tough. Anybody else?
I just wanna say something, at the end of the day, we, we, as a, as a team, the school committee should be focused on, on more than just being here in the meeting, because there is a lot of people up there that need help, and if we can help in any way, it will be better for the student at the end of the day. As a system, we can develop some type of system that we can go up there, I'm very passionate about getting parents involved more than, than while they are going right now to the schools. If we take the committee, all the schools, and take it outside of, of the buildings and bring it to the community, they're gonna see, because they might not used to, they might don't know what's going on in different buildings, but if we take this committee or the school or anything, and bring it to the community and talk to them and explain to them, like, okay, we can do this and we can do that together, and we can actually bring it to the superintendent, it might be a better result for the students, and at the end of the day, that's, that's what it matters. It doesn't matter how it's been called, at the end of the day, it's, it's student first priority.
Spagno, anybody else?
No, I mean, I think I just, it would help further this conversation if we knew, if we had an idea of what's subcommittees.
Or before?
Not even what before, which ones you, you know, you guys would like to create, you know, 'cause I think, you know, Pat's idea is great, but you're right, it's more, it's focused under one particular issue. I know a few years ago, like I ran like a parent involvement committee, and only met for the first two, three months before sort of the, the takeover and everything, so I think it's, 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 it's hard talking about subcommittee when it's just kind of like, it's like up in the air, like what, what is it you guys are, you know?
Yep, agreed.
I mean, it makes it difficult, we can't exact, exactly email each other about our, our ideas. I, I, I think that, I think budget is good, because that way we can get hands-on training, especially when receivership ends, that, that this way we know what to look for in a budget, how it's done, the, the compilation of it, things like that, presentation, I think that would be good for us to learn. So I, I don't know if it needs to be a subcommittee or more of a how-to, and that way we can invite the community, and the community can see, this is how the budget's put together, so there's no question. So I don't know, that, that was, that was my priority, I know that Pat had a parent involvement aspect when she came, when she was at the Leahy, and throughout her teaching career in general. I, I think that, I mean, we, we all know parent involvement is a thing that needs to happen, and I think that we're all passionate about that, and I think that that's something that we can do, is maybe a task force in the sense of getting parents involved, so I don't, I don't know about your ideas.
I have a suggestion, but I don't, Myra, you have anything? So my suggestion is this, I think that we take a, you know, the task force approach on one subject matter, maybe it's curriculum, and just we go and do that, maybe that's the next one we do, and then table the, the issue of, you know, what actual subcommittees from here we wanna do till the next meeting, so we can have a list of what might be possible and what they would do, and how they could be supportive, and then that way, right off the bat, we know from here, we're gonna take action on going to each of the schools to talk about curriculum. So I'm sure there's a lot of good stuff that's happening that we wanna learn about, that we want the, the parents to be involved in, I'm sure there's some questions the parents have about the curriculum that they're being taught, especially with, you know, some of the dynamic, you know, partnerships that we have with, with organizations that are, are teaching in our schools, like Spark and, or, or UP and things like that, so we can get some of that understanding. So, so I think that's a good place to start, so the first motion is, I'd like to entertain a motion to, to create this, I want maybe a roundtable or roundup, I don't know, you did it, so I'd like to maybe, task force is kind of tough around the edges, I wanna make something a little bit more.
Not subcommittee?
Speaking tour?
Yeah, speaking tour, yeah.
A tour, yeah, speaking tour on, on curriculum, so is your motion? A motion to do a speaking tour on curriculum.
Second with discussion. I, I don't know if it needs to be on curriculum per se, I don't know, I don't know everyone else's opinion on it, I, I personally would rather have it on something else, I don't.
But that's not gonna be the only one.
I'm just trying to start somewhere, y'all.
That's not gonna be the only one.
All right, yeah, it's just the first one.
Yes, it's the first one.
We can maybe do them quarterly, 'cause to get around to all, you know, an equal part of the community.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
If I could interrupt, I, I think curriculum would be.
Too much?
Too much for us to handle at this point, I think we need to leave the curriculum to the experts in the, in the school department, the curriculum people. I think we need to focus more on engaging community, that type of thing, being out in the community, and I don't, I don't know how to orchestrate that as far as a subcommittee goes.
So parent involvement?
Parents involvement.
Parent involvement, sub, subcommittee. So we're back to.
So we'll do that, do a parent involvement round tour, speaking tour. Does that sound good?
That's, that's gonna be monthly?
Who's the amendment was that?
No, we, no, the, so, hold on a second, so, the way happened before was, how many months did it, did you guys, it take you to get everywhere with the, with the turnaround plan?
We didn't even go everywhere.
We, oh, God, we, we started probably in November, December, and we finished in Feb, we, we didn't go to all the schools, we probably went to six or seven schools.
Yep, so you did six or seven schools and you, you hit like almost every area in the city, but you didn't have your school?
We, we probably hit every area of the city, but not every school.
I'd like to say something.
Just, just a question, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think it would be helpful, like even, you know, before we, 'cause when we sort of voted on that and we, we talked about going around all the schools, like we kind, we kind of already knew what we were gonna. and we, we talked about um, going around all the schools, like we kind, we kinda already knew what we were gonna be talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas with parent involvement, I think if, when we can do something, um, like have a committee around it, I think that's, that'd be perfectly fine. I'd be supportive of that. Uh, but if we're gonna do a speaking tour before we commit ourselves to do that, I think it'd be important to, you know, like even like if I'm going to a school, if I'm one of the Frost, to know what it is that we're gonna be taught, or have an idea of what is it we're gonna be addressing parents with.
No, I see that, I think that we, we put a nail in it now that we're gonna do it and you guys go about the business of putting it together and then we'll go up to the show. I mean, if we talk about doing something, one of the things that I can't stand in a committee setting is just talking about doing stuff. So we wanna do a tour, let's do the tour. And if you, cut, take time to put the stuff together, we can do that between now and the first time we do it. I'm not saying that we're gonna do one today and then tomorrow people are gonna show up and not know what they're talking about. So let's, I'm not, I, I think that there are enough voices talking about parent engagement that I am not necessarily gonna be the little person leading this conversation, but I, there's people here that want to. Um, I think Giovanni yourself, uh, Pat talked about it, let's meet after this. Um, have a conversation about what the PowerPoint looks like and then let's get to the tour and put a pin in it so we can say at the, at the very least, we're gonna do one thing on parent engagement and you guys can figure out what the content is, that's the.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Part of it is I'm trying to get off the subject.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Got more business, go ahead.
Isn't that the point of what Pat suggested or what the next bullet is suggested, school committee meeting at the sites? Aren't we gonna be meeting at the actual schools?
I would say that, I would say no, only in.
Is that the, is that the presentation we'll be making then, or is that just making us available? And this is gonna make us um, touch more schools than the task force did?
Yeah, I think what's on the agenda today is to talk about bringing the actual meat and potato and um, kind of everyday actions of a school committee into the school. And what the other thing is, is bringing one subject matter to a place, inviting parents and teachers of that school in that neighborhood in to talk about one specific matter. There won't be a roll call, there won't be, you know, a superintendent's report, there won't be communicate, it won't, it's different. Um.
Like an assembly.
Yeah, so what, what, yeah, like it's an assembly versus the business of the school committee.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest something?
Pat.
Um, how about uh, we, we take the next step from the turnaround plan? How about we look at some of the successes of the school department? I mean, certainly this evening, um, you know, the, the performances at the high school, the, the kids that have won the awards. How about we take what's that next step from the turnaround plan? What has happened since that plan was just um, put out to the community? And let's go out and share that with the community. So people know that the school system is moving, we've had successes in MCAS. We, you know, we've had a lot of things happen and the school system has evolved. And I, I wonder how many parents actually know what's happening. So there would be a, a natural sequence of events that we continue, create a PowerPoint that says this is part two of what's happening in our school system and go out and share it with the pa, the, the families.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor was to do one roundtable on um, parent involvement. It was seconded, we had discussion. So if that's not what people want, then maybe they voted down, so I'd like to make, move the question.
Well, I.
I'd like to move the question. The question is on parent involvement and then if somebody, if we don't wanna do that, then somebody can make another motion on uh, on the successes to date. That's how it works. So I don't have a roll call.
Um, can I, can I ask a question?
Uh, yes.
With um, so essentially, so the, the, the idea would be, it'd be around parent involvement, but what exactly that would mean, we would, we would figure it out.
Exactly.
So it could maybe be that, what Pat said, or it could be something else, but the committee would work together or people from the committee would work together to figure out what it would be.
Exactly.
Okay, so it's, yeah.
Cool, everybody clear on the motion?
Mm-hmm. So who's doing the roll call?
Uh, Mr. Blackford.
Aye.
Myra?
Aye.
Giovanni?
Aye.
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Well, Chair votes yes. Uh, so subsequent between now and the next meetings, we'll have a, a conversation about uh, the content and when the first one will happen.
Fantastic.
And then, and then we'll set the schedule.
If I could, if I could nominate someone, I think Pat.
How did I know that was going to happen?
But I, that, that being said, I, I think Giovanni, I, I know that this is something that's really important to you. I think roping in our new member, Pat, um, and, and Myra being a parent of actual kids in public schools. I mean, I think that our two new members have a lot to, to input from where we were. Um, and where they think we can move and I think that would be an excellent kind of tie-in between the three of you, so.
Okay.
Great. Superintendent?
Fantastic, I would say, you know, just historically, I think folks had asked to do subcommittees a few years ago. Uh, and it just didn't get off the ground and uh, the devil's in the details and in the execution. And not until Pat came and kind of shepherded everyone, uh, did we really have some success. And uh, I think it's a good idea to build on that success. So we're excited about uh, uh, this opportunity that you guys are gonna have going forward.
And that just brings another point up, so that, can we get a list of what the subcommittees were from before the receivership? Just so we can understand what the framework was before.
We absolutely can, because I do not know them either.
Mr. Blackford?
As a, as a quick um, task for all of us, I would say, can we all kind of come up with three or four subcommittees that we think would be really important and we can discuss at the next meeting what we think? Um, if any, that we should, we should have uh, moving forward.
Great, that's a good idea, so take away from people on this side of the table. Superintendent?
Okay, so we're moving on to suggested school committee meeting sites. Uh, I think in your packet you saw kind of a location, an alternating location, uh, one meeting being here, the next month being at a school. Uh, we got thrown off course a little bit by some weather, um, but the idea behind it is important. And uh, we'd like to hear a discussion from this committee on what you folks wanna do. I am flexible and can go where you need me to be.
Mr. Payano?
Jeff, if uh, can you remind us what those sites were? That I do not.
I'm not sure we picked sites.
No, we, can I?
There's a nice handout here.
I, I think that we do.
There's a nice handout, so if we can start from the handout, do you, you have that in front of you?
I have the handout, but it just says school, it doesn't say which school.
Well, it, it says an example.
Can I, can I add some clarity to that because I, I created it? Um.
Please.
I can help you guys out. Um, when we talked about it at our organizational meeting, I just went home and, and thought, um, you know, we, we have a few months before the end of the year and I thought, wouldn't it be nice if we were able to visit the four quadrants of the city? The four complexes, they're the larger schools that would probably have facilities, staging and whatever to, to facilitate our meeting. And um, I just went through the months and I, and just put, you know, we were meeting here, the next month the school, followed by here, the school, and so forth and so on. Um, what I also suggested is that um, you know, the superintendent could ask the principals if they wanted to feature something um, that was significant happening in their school or some performance or whatever. Um, that the children could do something almost like what we do at the school committee meeting. We could recognize them, hold our, hold our meeting, um, make sure that there's babysitting for the children so that the parents can stay at the meeting and then perhaps maybe coffee and um, then, talk to Anne Marie, coffee and some cookies. And that's how, you know, I envisioned it. Um, I thought by the end of, by December, by the end of this calendar year, we should visit the four large complexes. We should be able to do that.
Um, Mr. Payano?
Um, so I would say it'd be helpful to, to name them, so like Lawrence High School.
Well, I have the, well, I didn't even, you know what, to my um, I apologize, I didn't even include the high school. I had listed the Arlington, Partham, South Lawrence East and Frost, thinking that those were the four areas of the city.
Great. Um.
But most certainly, you know, the high school should be one too.
So just so we can get, can I, I'd like to entertain a motion to um, approve the schedule as presented today and then for discussion about where the first one might be.
Second.
Um, discussion.
Question?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Blackford?
Because it's kind of an off, off by month, um, I, do we, do we wanna amend it or do we wanna?
No, that's appropriate.
Um, so just move everything down one?
Yeah.
Pretty much?
Let's do that. Or up, right?
Up, yeah, whichever way.
So April will be the next one and that will be in a school, does, does that work for you and your team, Mr. Superintendent?
We are incredibly flexible, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so April will be the first time we'll be in the school and then May we'll be back in here.
Pat, do you have a preference where we're going?
Well, my, my only concern, Mayor, is you're going down the list in June. We meet the second Thursday of the month and I believe the schools will be out of, will be um, dismissed for summer. And that might pose a problem.
It's gonna be close, what is, we'll have to look at the calendar.
All right, so that's gonna be a problem for the schools there, I mean, they won't have children there. So we might have to rethink that. We might have to hold, why not do April and May at schools? And then in June, come back here to the Hall of the School Committee?
That's an amendment by uh, by Mrs. Mariano. Is that accepted by the motion maker?
Uh, it is.
Okay. So any others for discussion on the, on the schedule?
I would like to suggest that we go to the Partham first. Because they just won both, girls and boys won the basketball championship.
I wonder if that's in district A.
And I happen to know that the principal is ready to receive us.
I, I would like to go to Gilman.
So.
Now, you know why?
The Partham just won the basketball championship.
Well, let's do this, right?
There is a reason behind the whole.
I know why.
No, 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 there is, there is some information here, some information.
Sir Rodriguez.
The suspension on the, on the Gilman is very high. So I would like to go out there and figure out why is there?
So let's do this, um, the, the, the one in April, let's, because um, cause Myra came, she got a first bite at the apple. I think the, the amendment to your motion is to actually have the first one at the Partham. Would you accept that, Mr. Payano?
I will.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve as amended, um, and as amended by Mr. Blackford and further amended by Ms. Ortiz. And to accept the, the schedule as sent and um, begin the first one at the Partham. Any further discussion?
I think probably the second one, uh, Mr. Mayor should probably go to the south side.
All right. Can I, can I suggest that we not nail that down right now?
Oh, all right, all right.
That way we can have a further discussion and um, at least we get the schedule set and the first one done. And then when we come back, we'll, we'll set the rest of it, is that appropriate?
I mean, we're fighting over school committee meetings, maybe the superintendent, maybe the principals might want to as well, let them, let them duke it out a little bit.
All right, so, so let's call the question. Uh, Mrs. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Payano?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Ortiz?
Aye.
Mr. Blackford?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Okay, before moving on to final questions, uh, we have a save the date. The high school graduation this year is scheduled for Sunday, June first, at high noon in the stadium. Uh, please mark your calendars, the rain date is the following Monday at six PM. But we are hoping that like last year, we'll have a beautiful sunny day, twelve o'clock noon, June first, Sunday.
Um, Mr. Superintendent, um.
Mr. Blackford, sorry.
Uh, would that be at noon or would that be at, in the evening for the Monday rain out?
The Monday rain out is at six PM.
Any further questions on the graduation time and date?
Is, is that the earliest graduation we've had? Just a question, is that, is that one of the earliest graduations we've had?
I would imagine it is, given that uh, we start school in mid-August, so we have started earlier, um, probably than any school district around here. We should, it should also be noted that uh, we have taken only one snow day this year, um, compared to many other districts that have gone out many times.
Us fingers, everybody.
Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, final questions from the group, Mr. Chair.
Anyone have a question for the superintendent? We do not.
Hearing none, we're gonna move to public participation, is Mr. Molly here?
Yes, sir.
Is that the only person to send up?
No, we have three folks tonight.
Good evening, honorable member of Lawrence's School Committee. Lawrence Public School has moving forward with the best leadership of honorable Superintendent Raleigh. Public School has been more level one schools, more MCAS improvement, more higher school graduation and more academic progress. Lawrence Public is in the road to become the best public school. We have to remind you that the importance of the hard-working teachers and support of their union. Our citizens are united, demand from the new mayor to provide contract for our, our teachers. Three years we taught contract, it is impossible. If you are representing District A to District F, remind the new mayor the teachers in, has been three years we taught contract. The Lawrence Public School has teachers such as Mr. Mendez on a medical leave, a superstar, a community member that we support him. We demand of our new member and the new mayor, support of our teachers and their wonderful union. The important reason of success of turnaround plan, you as our elected official from District A and District F and District E, you know that our teachers has been working so hard. The campaign promise of our new ma, mayor to provide the best education for our children only possible with support of our teachers and their union, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly.
Just a point of order, Mr. Superintendent beforehand, do we have a time on, limit on this? This is the first time.
There is a time limit.
Do we have, do we have a bell or something? All right, just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, minute and a half, uh, Caitlin Richard?
Hi. Oh, I signed up to talk.
Oh, okay. You don't have to talk, that's okay.
That's fine.
Veronica Anticich?
You didn't sign up?
So I guess we had one.
You guys can talk, don't worry.
Well, welcome. Uh, before we close, I do wanna point out in your packet is the flyer for the two thousand fourteen edition of Dancing with the Stars. Some of the new stars who will be gracing our dance floor this spring include Dr. Mary Lou Bergeron. This is also the other Assistant Superintendent Dale Lipkin and our very own Mr. Pavel Payano.
Oh.
I'm not sure Mr. Payano understood about the level of competitiveness.
You guys don't have to go.
We encourage all to go, March twenty eighth at seven o'clock. March twenty eighth at seven o'clock, it's only five dollars, very reasonable.
I'm gonna be supportive.
Mr. Payano will be in action.
I'm gonna be there supporting you.
I'm recording you.
Nice, nice big signs.
My friends, that concludes the school committee, thank you very much.
Can I just, one second before you close?
You can, Mr. Chair.
I ju, I wanna just encourage folks, if you get a chance, I'll send the link around, Robert's Rules of Order. I wanna, I wanna apologize because we probably should uh, be doing that from the beginning. Um, just set a, a more orderly tone and a more organized manner. So if you have not, in the past, I know uh, my alumni, uh, friend Mr. Payano understands that because he's president of the Sune Senate and House Student Trustee. So they, they drill the, the Robert Rules of Order. It's a little bit easier to organize a meeting, to have a discussion about things and, and um, at the next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna go by those.
I look forward to that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you all, good evening.